All right. Back and ready to go. Okay, let's call our regular board meeting to order. Uh, additions to the agenda.
Administrative contracts.
Contracts.
And I have that on there.
Okay, so that will be.
That's under new business personnel. Are we screening?
Yes, we are live and in living color on the internet.
I'd like to add further discussion on the counselor position in sentry code. And I prefer if you could move that up the agenda to have some help from the public here on discussion of that.
So you want to talk more about the.
The counselor position, including the career advisor.
So I'll put that in our.
And the reasoning behind it is I still do not think we are following sentry code correctly.
By having a counselor. Okay.
Well.
I'm thinking maybe we should not put that on because our our administration isn't aware of it, and I think what you should do is bring it to the next meeting and then talk with him.
I would agree with you, Dwayne, but I think some of the discussion in the new business is going to involve what for the board to make a good decision on some of the discussion in the new business, we need to be fully informed on what we're deciding on. Fair enough.
So we'll tie that to the career advisor slash counselor. I know it's different. Career advisor and counselor.
It is confusing.
But we'll talk about it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
A second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, motion carries. All right, consent agenda, minutes from our regular meeting, five eight. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? Anything on that? Okay, seeing none, let's move to regime board bills. Okay, anybody have any questions on bills?
Not on the bills directly, but with with the bus maintenance, do we is that just on an as need basis, or do we have a contract with Frederick on that? Or is there?
As need.
It's an as need.
We try and use as much local.
Oh, yeah, I'm all for the local use, I'm just kind of wondering if we can look at a if some type of contract is a wise way to go there.
Is that a that 11,700, an accumulated amount in several months, or did we have a big one, big one?
Along with all those buses.
Yeah, three, four, plus three, four, six, five.
There was a whole bunch of them that had.
Gotcha.
One was starter, one was, I don't remember, a bearing going off the wheel or something.
Accumulated.
Yeah, it was a whole bunch of stuff.
And my point would be just, you know, if you're running a business like that, if you know you have a contract, you might be able to do better with your employees and staff, maybe even help the district out too, so it's something I think we should entertain and discuss around. But I'm all for the local.
Questions, comments, concerns, balance sheet.
Mr. Bones, we have text that they can't hear online with the background noise, I don't know if you can try that. Okay, you guys are working. I think by this time of the year, it looks like most of our revenue is in. Does the out-of-district tuition just get paid at the end of the year for a true-up, or out of that?
Yep, everybody's saying at the end of the year, everybody sends out their bills.
Okay, has any more questions or concerns of everybody? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, any questions? Do you all know how much pause I have in there? Twenty-one thousand nine seventeen? Oh, no, I'm sorry. That was the beginning balance. You ended with what? No, I lost it.
Seventeen eight one seven.
Okay, if there are no other questions or concerns.
I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion for a second.
Oh, second. Open seconded. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carries. All right, activity directors report.
All I have for Mrs. Mason is that the coaches are working hard at camp, so football's going on on Mondays, we have boys and girls open gyms, and then we have elementary. Lot of team camps going on right now, and then we have elementary girls camp that was put in, elementary boys camp that was just put in. I think she sent out the all call today, I didn't check it. She said she was going to, but gym's full, she sent me a schedule of all the things going on every day over here, so we could help parents out on phone call because sometimes it's hard to keep track of it all. So that's what we got.
Principal reports, Mr. Patterson.
Um, update on summer school, we had thirteen enrolled right now, so that'd be next year's first through sixth graders. Mrs. Christensen and Randy Kitson are running it. They did a different format, if you will, compared to last summer, so they chose to do five weeks, four days a week, so one big chunk versus two, I think they did two sessions, how long were the sessions last year? Like three or four weeks?
They were, the first session was in June, the second was in July.
Okay, so outside of two sessions, we did one big one to kind of get them to their summer break a little earlier, so TBD on which one they prefer after they finish up, but through the summer school, they require thirty hours of reading and thirty hours of math, and that'll get that, they'll reach that in their twenty days of summer school for those that are signed up. Bouncing way back to something, finally finished, I appreciate you guys' patience on our reading curriculum. Everything's finalized and everything is set up, so kindergarten through fifth grade, we'll be using a curriculum called Bookworms. They are set up and registered for training at the end of July, July twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. And we have twelve staff members that are signed up for that, which is awesome, and that'll be like the initial training, how to how to use the curriculum, how to go in and navigate the digital part of it as well. The big seller of Bookworms was our teachers do small groups in their ELA every day, and with the curriculums we looked at, this was basically the only one that had small groups built in forty-five minutes a day, so they have three blocks in that, they call it DI, differentiated instruction block is their small group instruction, and that was kind of our our big sell on that, so we're looking forward to that, we have all the materials for that at Taylor already, so you learn that once they get their money, they will act very quick, so they were on top of that, I think we got it within a couple of weeks of paying them, or signing the PO might not know that we're on board. Six through eight is going to be using a curriculum called Amplify. And again, that is, it's ordered, staff are signed up for training on August twelfth, their their initial training is a little bit different, they will do three hours of virtual training, I'm sorry, going back to bookworms real quick, that's all virtual, all three days are virtual. There's a kindergarten, first and second grade band, and then a third, fourth, and fifth grade band, so working with grade level teachers or close to grade level teachers. Amplify, we have five members, staff members signed up for that. They kind of, they'll do an initial three-hour training, again, just the overview of it. Their second session of training is a one-hour kind of check-in, a few months into the school year, and then they'll do near the end of the school year, another three hours to to see how the year went and what adjustments they can make, so. The only dates scheduled so far though is that August twelfth, that initial one, they can get the ball rolling with that.
Just when you say five staff, is it by teacher, or a mix of pair of us?
In admin. Teachers and admin.
Title.
Yep. And switching to the high school side, state scholarships for our seniors this year, we had seven that had earned that state scholarship, whether it was the academic or CTE pathway of that. With still a one possible, because the seniors, this year's seniors are in a weird spot, they're the last group for the old state scholarship requirements, juniors and everyone moving, or next year's seniors and everyone behind them, it will be called just the North Dakota State Scholarship, so you don't have that, you don't have the CTE and academic, it's just into one, they they kind of rearranged their their requirements and some indicators to meet and things like that.
Is that good or bad for our student population, in your opinion?
Um, I think it's good, because we do really well with dual credits and MAP courses, and that's a big one, and something as simple as, hey, have you worked for forty hours in high school? Check a box, you know, and a really easy one for us to get, the military, the military-ready pillar. If they can get a C or higher in PE, which just show up and just show up, I don't know if you have the change, you get a C, just show up, just be there. And then if they get, they lowered their ASVAB score from an eighty-one to a fifty, so if they get above a fifty or higher in that A, B, or C in their PE courses, that pillar's done, they just have to get two additional things from the other pillars, and so they can borrow from other pillars now versus this one, this one, or this one.
Okay.
So it it's different, but it it's supposed to provide more options for students to be able to reach that scholarship. But again, that ACT is immovable, so that ACT stays at a twenty-four.
And we saw seven get it this year out of.
Yep, and two of them earned it with, you know, outside of their other indicators, two of them met that ACT requirement, so it kind of shows that how important that work keys is, because five got it through their work keys testing.
Okay.
So it's a very good alternative, and that AC, or the work key stays as the alternative on the new requirements as well. They can get the ACT score or get certain scores on their workies.
Oh, so seven ought to remind me again who my seniors do be.
Fourteen that could.
So fifty percent.
Yep. And that's a $6,000 scholarship.
And one liberal, right, is what you said.
And one who's the, because she's, the student's trying to get qualified on the new requirements, they kind of have to go in there and manipulate a little bit more than just looking at it on the the system that's kind of built into the old, so I think. Yeah.
I'd just encourage the board to look into that more, I think the state can afford a little more of that, and maybe talk to our future representatives a little bit here, so. I think it's good to hear that they're making options, but still wonder about our challenge to get that, so.
Sure. And everything else I was going to talk about was covered in our initial meeting, or the meeting, the fourth meeting, if you will, so that is all I have.
All right. Thank you. All right, Dr. Vogel.
Well, Dr. just covered all the updated scholarships, so I'm good with that, that was a great job. Social studies curriculum, the team chose Teach TCI, they felt that it was the most hands-on curriculum that they could take and work with immediately. There will be a couple of grades that aren't using it for the fact that they teach specific standards according to the state for Lake North Dakota Studies. The teachers have option if they wanted online license, if they wanted student online license, or teacher, or the curriculum itself. And so we just did a spreadsheet of how the teachers were going to best utilize that curriculum, and will be with your approval ordering based on what the teachers wanted for the classrooms. Out of a few curriculums, it was led by the social studies teacher, Mr. Kohler. He did the research about what curriculums should be used throughout to be consistent, and then set up the meetings, and we met and went through what would meet the teachers' needs and what wouldn't.
Could you see the name of the program yet?
Teach TCI.
I'm going to steal Dr. Vogel's verbiage, pending your approval. Six through eight, that's potentially you's Amplify, sorry.
You may be setting boxes down.
Yeah.
If you ordered it already.
Well, after July one, I'll put that for a payment, buddy.
I was going to say, where?
I thought I'm quick to that.
Stayed two years. After sleep, you just stayed two years.
There it is.
There it is. Any questions? Other than that, the students are registered, I have a couple kiddos that are taking some extra classes, I have someone that, actually a couple kids looking at heavy operating equipment through RACTC, but RACTC isn't sure if they'll have it up and running by fall, so we figured into their schedules that they'd have space either fall or spring. And then we have growing numbers in dual credits, mostly because we have our teachers now qualified to be able to offer that, but also kind of sistering with Lake Region of being so kind of working with our students, and that seems to be growing to get their dual credits up. I do feel that that somewhat helps them prepare for college, which is maybe why you're getting some students more comfortable with the online, but also working with instructors and communicating. They have extra help here, like if someone says, I'm really struggling with this class, is there someone that can help, we send out an email or check. Sometimes we can, sometimes we say, let's call your instructor and see what you can do, so just set up those communication things, understanding. If that helps.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Vogel. All right, old business.
Those are the bids we received for the beach vac, and the building committee sat down and talked about it, and they, we decided to go with H.J. Thompson and son's bid. So we accepted that bid, and right now H.J. Thompson and son is working with Danny's Electric to get all the electric stuff squared away. That's where we're at with that. R2PS locker room, shower drains, camp rec, went to use the showers on Monday night in the boys' locker room, and it would not drain and was full of water. So we, I called in R and R, who helped us out over at Taylor, and they saved the day. This is what they pulled out of there, along with.
Chunks of cast iron plate?
Yes. Now, according to Amber and I were talking about it, H.J. Thompson and son re-sleeved those lines.
Well, I thought we did something like that.
Yeah, we did.
Twenty twenty-two, I think.
I don't think it worked.
You brought evidence.
But yeah, we're definitely going to have to, R and R said they would come out and well, I'm sure H.J. Thompson and son ran a video camera through there and everything, but he said there's like different options you could do, but with the deterioration of that pipe, you know, it's.
That's the options, isn't it?
No, no, but he was able to get it unplugged, there was a Sharpie in there and some other foreign objects, but that was the most of it, that junk.
They didn't run a camera at all?
No, not, he he said he would come back out and then they could.
I wonder if we should make H.J. Thompson do it if he's stupid. Just say, hey, you guys, we have an issue, we had to call somebody in to come in and fix it, we need you to come look at it. Would be my suggestion.
I would too.
I'm not sure if there's a warranty or whatever, but at least they can be like, yep.
And that was in twenty-one.
I think so, I think it was in the summer of twenty-one.
And it was eighteen thousand.
Well, I think we just said we were going to use them again, right, so. I don't know, we got to turn this one, maybe they should, maybe we should hold that a little longer.
Just a suggestion, I know you've been talking about the lock rooms and you know, maybe once you get the beach vac project done, and next year, if Dunn County keeps providing you know, those construction loans at two hundred some thousand dollars, maybe maybe it'd be prudent to put together a phase of like, you know, this year, let's do this, and then next year, if we get that same amount of money, then let's do this, but you know, maybe start with the pipes and.
Well, yeah, we might, at the point where we need to check camera on concrete remodel.
Right.
All the fixtures, all the.
It's not going to be any cheaper than it is today.
No, no. So just FYI on that, but we can check with H.J. Thompson and son and see what's.
But long-term, I think we should be, I mean, we've been talking about that for
Oh, yeah.
Several years.
Do you want me to put down the facility? I'll put down.
Yeah, we sure could, it's, we need it. Have to spend some of those extra funds, there you go.
Activities with Huddle, we looked at it and it was going to cost us about fifty-seven hundred dollars to buy the athletic package. And what the quote they were giving us was twelve thousand six, so we're about six thousand dollars difference. But with, and we had to make a decision by June first in order to keep those rates, you know, they always have these marketing things. So I just went ahead and proved it, and we have we have it locked in for three years at twelve-six, and that would cover the elementary, the high school, gymnasium, and the football field. And people could stream it for free. However, when they go away someplace that has NFHS, you're still going to have to have the NFHS pass if you want to watch wherever they're at. But as far as for home games, it would be all free, and then we would have the option to do advertising, which I think we could easily reboot that six dollars. So we signed up for three years, and I think we have, Adam already got some stuff, so. And what's nice about these monitors is there's no computer with it. So like with those pixel lots, if you look up, you see there's a big case hanging on the outside that has a computer that hooks up to the pixel lot. This is just internet and power, that's all you need. So the one thing in Taylor, we'll probably have to run some electrical, because I'm, I don't know what's on that east wall there of the gym. I don't think there's a lot of plug-ins over there, so, but that, to me, would probably be the place to put it unless you're putting it above the gym, or the stage, which might be.
Well, stage too high, I don't know.
Okay, well, if we're committed to that, do we have someone who can head up advertising sales?
Yeah, I think once, I know Adam and Jordan sat down with the guys, so I think, you know, between those two, we can figure out how to do the advertising and get some. Do they install this for us, Huddle? Yes, they do.
So it's a, we're looking at three-year contract?
No.
What's the clauses for breaking into if we're not happy?
I don't know.
Right, well, fair enough.
Talk the easiest way.
I know there's lots of other schools that are using it, and they're very happy with it, so. We had a lot of issues with that. Sit there and just.
Yeah, I watched it go.
Huskers, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Okay, anything else? Old business. All right, new business. Title.
We got our estimated title-one funds. As you can see, like when I talked the previous meeting about how the numbers had adjusted and went up, that it would probably make more money. So we got about ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-six more dollars than last year for title one. And then with Carl Perkins funds, if you remember, we're no longer part of the Luciano Consortium, we're now part of the Headinger Consortium. And estimated Carl Perkins is seven thousand six hundred and ninety, and that's the forms that we split up to what we wanted, what Mr. Isaac and Mrs. Dormand are looking at, spinning out. Mr. Isaac is looking into a welding robotic arm, so. S R three updates. So in talking with Amber and Russ, we decided that we were gonna try and close out the S R three this fiscal year. Meaning Amber submitted salaries for up to four, what was it, four months, one hundred and twenty days. And so that got to about, most of it except for about forty-one thousand. We haven't heard back yet if it's been approved, but we haven't heard back that we've been denied, so that's good. So that's, that was the plan there, that we wanted to finish that up this fiscal year. Then we don't have to fill out more reports down the line. Cause if, if we carry it over into the next fiscal year, then you're gonna have to fill out another report at the end of the whole entire year then. Instead, we could just do the one report that, hey, we're done.
So there's forty-one thousand dollars left after what you've already submitted?
Right.
Okay.
That we need to spend.
Okay.
And which we have next year?
Well, but you wanna finish it this year?
No, we wanna finish, we'll finish it all this year. So, okay. And that's where the next part comes in. So like the social studies curriculum is, that one actually is a good, pretty good deal. Twenty thousand dollars for six years. So that's a good one. And the, also the, the reading curriculum is, we went with three years, and that's eleven thousand dollars for all three years. So we're at thirty-one thousand and then we'll just mess around and get the rest taken care of. Oh, and then the Wagner music chairs. Wow, wait, or should I just keep talking? We're already, it's all intertwined anyway. So, the music chairs, if you remember when we built the school, we had to make some cuts. And one of those was with furnishings and.
Yeah, we didn't buy a lot of furniture.
No. So the music chairs are definitely in need of update. And I, I put some pictures on there that shows you how the seats are cracked. And the formica is coming off the tops of the desks. So Mrs. Grass figured out what she wanted and what type of chair and had students sit in it, and this is what she came up with, so. And that, once again, we'd use S R funds, but we'd just use that money that we got from the salaries to. Cause I'm not gonna send her, Mrs. Butterworth, a music chair thing to have her send it back to me and say, it doesn't work, even though music things are supposed to work. But it's just a lot cleaner the other way, so. Does that make sense with all that? That's all I had on S R three.
Okay. And that takes care of curriculum and instruction?
Well, no, we have to.
We, we need to.
We need to act on those.
Which one individually?
Mr. Patterson acted on one.
So just for clarity on the salaries portion, we're just truly submitting for salaries for that funding. It's not as though we're adjusting any salaries or anything.
It's just, it's already been paid out.
Okay.
So you can go back one hundred and twenty days.
Right, okay. I mean, just a general statement on that, you know, it is what it is. It was challenging to use up these funds. But in general, the purpose of the S R three funds was to help schools deal with the hardships that were brought on by the COVID year. And, you know, a lot of our teachers and that had to adjust and why we've seen it in the test scores. So I just encourage us to keep digging for whether we can use our funds for intended purposes too.
Like a social studies curriculum or anything? I mean, if you're looking at curriculum, so, I mean, that's, those funds are gonna help cover that.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, and basically you've been able to update all of your core curriculum with S R three, which has been helpful.
Okay, so I start with cybersecurity plan?
This is a requirement.
It's the state?
Yep, so Dr. Volker put together, been working with Mr. Ziegler.
And talking with Jesse.
Yep, put together the, the plan that we need to have in place starting July first. Make a motion to accept the cybersecurity plan.
So is this just copy and paste it out of Elgin-Labic or?
Yes and no. So when we talked to Russ, cause I see it still says in there, students in Elgin-Labic.
Oh, does it?
Yep, that was the plan that he had originally come up with and then discussed it with me and then asked me to go in on the high school side and add teachers in who would teach it and what class it would fall under. But everything else stayed exactly the same because this was an example given out by the state of where those standards could be met. And if, some of the standards are already being met in those areas. And then some just need to be conscious of having the conversation or meeting those standards when they teach specific things they're already teaching. So it was, it was trying to make it as easy as possible with less work for as many as possible. If that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, it just looked copy and paste. So I was wondering if we went through it and made sure that we can manage this as a staff.
Yep, yep. So everything else through elementary was left alone. Library was left alone, which I'll have to look into. I have some library association sites that I can get a lot of free stuff from. And then I'm gonna substitute with some lesson plans with my people to fill the other ones that I can't get.
So do we have a library media specialist?
I'm the library media specialist, yep. So I'll be working with them in July. I talked to both of them right now. Both of them would like, one's very busy and one would like a little summer.
True.
So we'll be working pretty hard in July to cover a lot of those things. And then we did as minimal amount as possible in the classrooms. And then high school is already, like I said, covering a lot of it in different classes that they have. So they just have to know which specific class they're teaching again. But this might, approval of the board and then forwarded to the state may make it so that the students don't have to take two separate cybersecurity for credit for graduation. And then that would open them back up to some of the electives that they want to be in or would choose. They may still choose cybersecurity. But right now, you're seeing low numbers in some of your other areas because they were supposed to get one full credit. Well, that's two classes out of all the electives that, I mean, that's a lot.
Yeah, I was just disappointed that the state put this on us.
Well, to that point, yeah, that's when I looked at this, what is it, a thirty-page document here? I was blown away by the content of this. And my concern is around staffing it.
Yeah.
And then it's a law, so, I mean, it's interesting to, so. So I was wondering, combing through it, so combing through it, you feel like we can accomplish this with our staff?
I do. This is actually better than limiting our students to their offerings. So like when it says the English teacher, if they're already doing research on the internet, it's a conversation and discussion about what are the safeties of the internet? What are the safe sites you can be on? What are sites that you should be on? What is the best information? What's not the best? You know, some of those things that are integrated.
Or how to identify a legitimate.
Right, source, yep. So, but it's pretty extensive. A lot, I shouldn't say a lot, but some of it was already done through the library. But now a lot more will be through the library and then spread across where it can be.
Can I ask a question? Jesse, do you feel like what you see for elementary, cause this is the first I've seen it, is doable for elementary staff?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it's following directions to use a device. Explain that the connecting device allows information to be shared. It's, it's very, very, very basic at the elementary level. But it also includes a lot of the live, like, branding covering it too.
But it is targeted just at elementary and middle school, right?
No, it's, it's K through twelve. That's why right now in our schedule, we have two classes in our schedule to get a full credit. But with this approved, then they wouldn't necessarily have to get a full credit in those specific courses cause they're getting it throughout ninth through twelve, if that makes sense. But we have to say who is teaching it, what class, where at, what period, how many minutes.
Right.
It's gonna, you know, we're gonna have to record it. What day was it in your plan and your lesson plans? That's all gonna have to be saved and recorded.
Good.
Okay, John made a motion.
Second.
Do I make a second motion? Any more discussion on the cybersecurity plan? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same side, motion carries. Social studies curriculum. And we need to look at it in particular there?
Mrs. Lette, T C I.
Yeah, we just talked, we talked.
Teach T C I, yeah.
And that's twenty thousand for six years.
Looks like it's online.
All our curriculums now, it's a pay subscription?
Not online ones.
Where a lot of them are going.
No more, buy a book and you're set for ten years? Yeah, it's gonna start weighing into our budgets.
It is.
Yeah, I mean.
But I was actually surprised with these, like, you know, with that Wonders curriculum? That was eighteen thousand dollars just for one year. And then they wanted forty-five thousand for three years, you know? So I mean, when we can get six years for twenty thousand, that's.
What's been the last bill comparatively of a traditional book and, and that? I mean, one of those, similar price or better?
Well, it's only paid, we paid what, eighteen thousand for one year to continue the Wonders. Just to get through this year and then we got that grant.
Do we get books with constitution too or not?
They had the options. So there's a couple of people that have some books. They stayed away from workbooks. So psychology and sociology will have the curriculum. Grades two, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve, which was not online. And I think the reason the online was such a seller is because you have so many lessons on there. But you have short videos that go along with those lessons for your visual learners to have that connection and then have better conversation.
So if you got the books, you don't have access to the online?
You just still have to buy the lessons online.
Sure.
Yeah, they're gonna get us.
It's a big business.
Yeah. That's something we definitely need to make sure that the state knows for school funding that this is the direction that it's going.
Yeah, yeah, with one dollar. So we'll all make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it. Accept social studies.
Shannon move, do I make a second it? Any more discussion? Social studies curriculum? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same side, motion carries. Reading curriculum, the six through eight reading.
Yeah, that's to amplify that Mr. Patterson.
Yep. Okay, is there any more questions or clarifications you want on that? If not, definitely entertain a motion on that as well.
Also.
You got a motion?
I'll second.
Motion on the second. Discussion on six through eight reading curriculum. Same thing, pretty much online, or is there books on this one?
So it's called a blended package, so they'll have, they'll have physical books, but also the online component too.
I like getting books.
And that quote does include the eighteen fifty for the staff training. That's a three-year curriculum plus the staff training.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, saying none, all in favor, say aye. Pose same side, motion carries. Music chair proposal.
I'll make a motion to accept the music chair proposal.
Second.
Okay, move in second, and any discussion? Discussion questions on music chairs? Saying none, all in favor, say aye. Pose same side, okay, motion carries. All right, that gets us to personnel.
We received a letter of resignation from Mrs. Sarah Rhodey. Would like to thank her for her service.
Okay. And, and that is, that's our opening for a para.
Right.
This is a para.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation.
Do we need to, not a para?
No.
That one is.
Second of them.
Okay, it takes us to teacher contract timing. And I believe there's a document in here regarding what, regarding what's in the.
What's in the collaborative bargaining agreement and the century code.
So we can, we can offer contracts as early as March first. And everything has to be on prior to May first, which you actually, with that one, you end up running into sometimes during negotiated years. Which is our year coming up, right? Next spring will be a negotiation year. So yeah, you can offer contracts March, March first.
I think there's a huge upside to it.
Yeah.
Cause then you know what you can have but not have. You know, listening, but the longer it is, the less you have to pick from other places too, so. And the quicker you get years out there, the sooner you can probably fill it.
Yes. So with this year, okay, now I say this year, this next year coming up, will be a negotiation year in twenty twenty-five. You know, in the interest of getting things out early, we, we need to start negotiations on January first. It's gotta start.
What is, is this include administration? Can be known sooner than March? Or is this just, I don't have the time to look up the century code, but I guess it could.
This one's talking. This is, this one's talking teaching contracts.
Okay, certificates. The only reason I bring that up is that part of what's caused us some delay, you know, and I said it in the strategic planning meeting, was administration turnover. So we're working to, you know, fill an administrative position at the same time. We're gonna, and I don't know if we intentionally, but we kinda hold up on some of the others, see what happens. So that's another piece of this is looking at when we offer our administrative contracts. I think it's wise to offer administrative contract prior to if possible, so that you know if you have a vacancy there, so that you can fill. Cause an administrator should be involved in hiring staff that they're, you know, if then we have a vacancy and we gotta hire, you kinda want the person that's gonna be supervising in there, so.
So what do you say on administrative contracts? We should offer them before March first?
Yeah, I would like to see administration contracts so that we know where we stand prior to offering, offering teacher contracts.
Well, in the hopes of, this century code is for a contract, is for teachers and administrators.
It is, okay. And that the earliest date in century code is the March one?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
I know, forget changing timing on administrative contracts. Cause we're, we're just gonna do it from the link right now. For principal, principal, business manager.
It's kinda very, the past four years. So you can say whatever you want, put it in.
Well, I guess we could offer the contract. Well, I guess we could offer the contract earlier for the upcoming year.
Yeah, I mean, the intent is just that we're ahead as much as possible of the job market for replacements and/or position adds. I mean, it's one of the things we can do. The other piece that I think would be in this same discussion, again, all of this goes to collaborative bargaining, but there's nothing like discussing it and see where we can get to. I'd hope that the teachers wanna see what we can do to get the best candidates, but what we tend to, if I've been on the board a year, I think we voted on raises kind of midsummer. Does that have to be? I, I'm just going to the point of where...
Raises for?
For teachers, per se.
No, that was in the collaborative bargaining agreement.
Okay.
That was last, that was...
I think we did a two-year agreement.
Yeah, so I was in the spring.
Salary, that was for non-certified staff.
Okay.
That would've been spring.
So last year we were voting on non-certified staff raises?
Correct.
Classified staff raises?
Probably.
Okay. So, so when our teachers get a contract, it also includes what they're paying?
Negotiating with them.
Okay, what their pay is gonna be?
Yeah, it's already written out.
So then when you've done a negotiating, then you issue the contract, they have so many days to sign it, and then that's...
Right, but what my question is, is that the contracts we issue are pay with raise included? Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's all, it's all defined.
Okay.
To answer Damian's question, it'd be nice to be done early. A lot of times you wait to see where you get for state funding, so you know what you can give the teachers for salary. You don't know what you're getting, what you can give them, so that pushes you back.
Tell me more on that, because like, it was stated once in one of the meetings that if we add a position, we have to rob from teacher pay. Help me understand that, I don't follow that.
But the, in 20, spring of 2023, when we did the negotiated agreement again, we were waiting for the legislature to basically finish, right? We were, so, and then that's how we ended up with a three and a half, 3.25% raise, I think it was. And that's what they came out with and said, yep, this is what you have to do, you know, for teachers. And that's what the state was giving us. So unfortunately, and in spring of 2023, it was, I bet it was May, or the end of April, when we got the negotiated agreement done. I don't know if you guys remember at all, but you know, that's all along.
I guess that doesn't answer my question. My question is, what fences do we deal with? When I look at the salary spread, or I guess I'll just ask it, so isn't it up to us to decide our pay scale and our raises and that? Is there fences the state that I'm unaware of puts around them?
So much of the new money is passed, I think it's 70% passed, passed to go to teacher.
Okay, so that's a minimum, but not a maximum?
Right, but you gotta remember that new money also has to cover administrators and your classifieds as well.
Yeah, but I don't think there's an upper limit that state could ever have. If you want to pay every teacher $200,000 a year, I think you could.
But the minimum would be 70%.
Minimum of 70% of the...
The new monies that you're getting from the year.
They even changed that though from year to year, don't they?
Teachers don't want us.
Some of their nose situations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, so. Unfortunately, yeah, the legislative regs are fine, I imagine, it's a negotiated year.
And that's always the last thing on the docket is education, because it's so much funding is. I wish they would finish that first.
So in fact, that statement that we have to take away from some pay to raise some other pay is not true then?
Well, it is, I mean, we don't have endless supply of money, right?
Right.
I mean, you've got a budget, you've got X amount, and you want it to balance.
Right.
So I mean...
But that statement, in its would literal sense, is not. It still comes down to budget, right?
No, it's, well, it is true, but if you, if you have a limited budget, and if you wanna raise a bunch here, you might have to take some of here, because you don't have a...
So that's what was meant by that statement?
Unlimited budget, right? I mean, it'd be awesome if we could just not have that constraint, but that's...
No, I get it, I was just looking for clarification of that, because it was said specifically that you have to take from other teacher salary to add a position or something like that.
Not from salaries, maybe from the raises. I mean, you may have to, you may not be able to give as much of a raise if you add another position, because you have had, at the end of the day, you only have so much money to give out, so.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you could spend yourself on, I mean, federal government does it all the time, I guess maybe we should do.
No, and that's not what I'm suggesting, Joe. Please don't, please don't verbalize what you think I'm thinking. I'm just trying to clarify that statement that was said specifically, you have to pull from teacher salary to add a position.
Not from teacher salary, from teacher raises.
You have, so you're saying we have to pull from teacher raises to add a position?
22% of the budget for the school is salary.
Okay.
So if you're spending, if you're adding another position of any kind, and you don't get funding, and so you may, may not be able to give out as big of a raise as you would have if you didn't add a position.
But not just for teachers.
Right, not, that's for everybody.
District staff.
But irregardless, when we look at our total budget, as long as we're within budget, we're within budget, right?
Yeah, as long as we, we have balanced our budget the last, I don't know, year.
Yeah, we, I mean, it was in our plan here that we've been anywhere from $100,000 to half a million.
And when the S R M A runs out, that, that will change.
It gets tighter, yeah.
It'll get tight, and you'll, you'll be back to negotiating.
So I don't know where we're, we're left on this, but I mean, I don't, there's a decision that needs to be made other than that consensus that...
Well, I think it's the goal of everybody every year to get contracts, obviously. Get our contracts out. I don't think there's anybody in the school, teachers included, that don't want to issue contracts as soon as you can.
Well, and we just historically haven't been then, or, you know, and like I say, I point to that maybe inconsistency.
As soon as we could get done with it.
And it's not just us, you have to remember, it's the teachers. We're negotiating with the teachers, and sometimes the teachers want to... The teachers want to know where the state goes.
So we've had the collaborative bargaining agreement hold up, the issuing of contracts, is what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's just something that maybe we can work on for the intent of...
Well, like I said, I think everybody in the school, teachers included, would love to do it as early as you can. Because anybody that doesn't want...
When I was, but I'm, the reason it wasn't done is because of the funding from the state.
Correct.
They were, they were taking forever to decide where they were gonna be at.
So something like this, in my mind, what we should be doing is getting a book of bylaws of how we operate the school. And just agree upon what our desire is, and issue that to our administration.
Statute on what you have to do and negotiate.
Yeah, we just read it.
Yeah, so you gotta follow that too.
Right, yeah, I hear it. I just think we should write that into our bylaws and just take a good look at it, because it's probably a large factor in our ability to, to recruit good staff.
Do you know if we have bylaws?
We don't have any bylaws or any...
I, I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah.
What we, what we, what we do or...
I think for this, it might not be bylaws, I think it might be...
Operating procedure?
Procedure, but there's, yeah, I guess standard operating procedure, that kind of stuff. Might be in replace of your bylaws for an organization like this.
We have books of minutes, I think, history of minutes. Like, it's tough to wade through. Okay, you guys good?
Well, I think it'd just be, we should just take it as an action item with Ziegler to discuss teacher contracts, some of the board's thoughts, which, I mean, to me, it's more than just timing. There's a lot, like I was saying, about language of the, of the contracts, you know, kind of how we, how we kind of weigh that out. I think we could improve it. It's one of the, if, if, it's challenging to find teachers, that's just a fact, right? And it's, this, although it can be challenging, is one of the easy things that you can do for, you know, retaining and recruiting teachers, in my mind. Because it's, it's black and white stuff, it's just timing, it's how you write the contracts, it's that type of thing. Actually recruiting is a lot of times more challenging, right? So I'd just make a motion that when we put it as an item, when Ziegler joins us to discuss.
So you want to put it on the agenda for the future?
Correct.
Okay, we could do that.
You know, and timing on that can be, because it certainly won't be an issue until maybe November, December.
Yeah, we don't want it to be too long.
Right.
Okay, administrative contracts, we've got two of them.
Should we just, well, I guess we got two, yeah.
We have Amber and Dr. Vogel, right?
Unless she's...
She's already, yep, she's already gotten her, her contract, so we've just got, we've just got two. I think the board action, that's sort of, I think that the decision that needs to be made is that the raise that's put in them over last year. So I propose that, you know, that we add, do a 3.5% raise to the Amber and Vogel's contracts. And you guys had requested no other changes on your contracts? Other than that, so. With that, I would, I mean, yeah, we just need board approval on that. You guys want to see the contracts? We have copies of them, it's, it's up to the board members. I know you like to look at contracts.
Yeah, I'd sure like to see it. I guess my question would be, are we doing 3.5% just on the girl's contract or just the administration portion? Because if I'm understanding, Dr. Vogel's contract, it's, it's a portion administration.
I don't think there's any difference.
There's no difference in the contract.
I think it's just more of a flat feet contract, add 3.5% to it. You know, the only thing that you don't add to is the, the health benefits and the...
Right, yeah, other than that. It's the foundation salary.
It's the base salaries, 3%, so. Do you want to see that before we vote?
No, I guess at, at that kind of dollar amount, I'm not worried about it.
3.5% for students.
I would just like to see the contract, to my private point of understanding the contracts, because I hear somewhat library duty, some of this and that, and then it's not disseminated in the contract. I think it's just wise if we'd have that spelled out, so we understood.
Okay, we have, Dwayne made a motion?
Yep.
A 3.5% raise.
I'll second.
Second, Shannon seconded, any other discussion? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, motion carries. So your contracts are approved, so you can sign them.
There's an edit to fix that.
Okay. All right, assistant, so bring this to our last item, assistant principal slash career advisor, and discussion regarding career counselor. More discussion regarding career counselor, so. I believe we have, do we have a job description?
Yes.
Being a student slash assistant principal?
I tried a little bit, I just had a spot.
Nope, no, I don't want to.
Yeah, I tried it twice, though.
You gotta reboot.
I guess. So, okay, I see, you know, board action underneath of this. I mean, we're not deciding right now if we're making a decision on this. This is, we're just gathering information, correct?
No, I think we could, if we want to decide tonight, we can. I, this...
So are you talking for this next school year right away? I mean, how easy is it gonna be to find, we're already looking for three teachers.
I am in.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't see the benefit of rushing a position like this myself. I think we need to obviously have time to advertise it, pick somebody that we wanna, whether it would be somebody internally wants to do it, or it's applicant, or whatever it happens to be. I mean, I know we've talked about it a couple different times, but I think there's a lot that's gonna go into this, more than just making a decision right now, is my opinion.
Can I make a comment? Am I allowed to talk? I don't know. Am I allowed to talk?
Sure, go ahead.
I think that you need to look back at that, the way the century code reads out. And maybe you have an attorney take a look at that on what your actual requirements are. Because the way I see it is that there's a counselor that is required for K through six, and there's also a counselor that is required for seven through 12. The way I see it is that there's two that are needed, the way that century code reads out. So I just think that that would be a wise thing for you guys to make sure that that's, that you can do your 1.09, or that if you do, need to have two of them. And that might make a difference on that position.
Let me look at that. This position came of, I put it in question of Mr. Ziegler. I think, I think in looking at what he's coming into and what the school needs, that this is what he asked for. So just so you guys know, I mean...
Well, kind of even more of a reason to hold off then, because if there's questions that I've got, then that's the first I'm gonna ask, you know what I mean? Like, I just don't, I, I don't know, I don't see the benefit to rush something like this right now.
So this document we have was written by Ziegler?
No.
No, was it written?
I think it was written by a combination of Mr. Ziegler's, Dr. Vogel, and Mr. Paulson.
My question is that if you're gonna wait, who's gonna do it next year?
Who's gonna do what?
Do you know how many times I've heard we're under crunch time on times? We had a lot more time than this, and, and I...
If you're not gonna put it out there, I'm just curious.
I, I mean, I think that, well, that's part of the reason I'd like to have the person who's helping make this decision be here, so we can talk about our options, rather than just making a new position that is more than a career advisor. I mean, I'm all in on, on, I've brought it up many times, that I think we need to do something like this. But to make it happen right now for this next school year, I think seems a little rushed. In my opinion. And we know all the people here that are gonna be in the making decisions.
My question is who's gonna do it?
You're talking the career advisor portion, right?
Correct, yeah. And that's mandated by the state.
No, and see, so to Lisa Hahn's point, we probably need to clarify this, and to her point, we're probably gonna have to get to a lawyer to understand this. But I sent it, I don't know, Joey, if you can distribute the actual century code to read that, and...
Well, I can.
I'm a C-plus grammar student, but I read it differently than it was described to us.
I could forward email to these guys, but I don't know if they'll get it, or can you guys get your email on these computers?
Well, for sake of time, I'll read it as articulate as I can. So, century code 151619, counselor positions, counselor positions. And I want to clarify that the career advisor position is not anywhere in the century code other than section four of this. So there's four sections to the century code. Item number one reads this, "Beginning with the 2010 to 11 school year, each school district must have available one full-time equivalent school counselor for every 300 students in grades seven through 12." That's item number one. Item number two, "Beginning with the 2022-23 school year, each school district must have available one full-time equivalent student counselor, school counselor for every 300 students in grades kindergarten through six." So the distinctions there are that, and the first one is grades seven through 12, the second one is grades kindergarten through six, and it's a non-issue anymore on the dates, because we're under both for dates.
But we have 300 kids in the whole district, Mr. Paulson.
Right.
So that's where the percentage is broken down.
So we're interpreting it that way, but is that the correct intent and interpretation?
That's the way I interpreted it.
Okay, and I'm not sure that I interpret it the same way. And I'd like to clarify that.
So what do you read to disagree?
What do you think, Mr. Paulson?
Well, I honestly think it means that we need to have a school counselor for grades seven through 12 and kindergarten through six.
Two counselors?
Correct. Then item three says, "Up to one-third of the full, of the full-time equivalence requirements established in subsection one, which was the grade seven through 12," that was the point I was trying to clarify earlier, "may be met by the career advisor." So the career advisor portion can only be applied to the seven through 12 portion, which further leans to that the intent here was a separate position, in my interpretation. Like I said, I, I'm a lawyer.
That's for larger schools.
Well, this is the century code, and that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I know, but we don't have more than 300 kids.
I get that.
In the whole entire district.
So do we know what, like, Mott and whatever, are they doing it the same way we're doing it?
Yeah, they, you know, counselors are hard to come by.
Right.
So, yeah, they do the career advisor, and they split it up, so they can.
Right, what I'm saying is they have one counselor cover K through twelve versus one doing K through six, one doing that seven through twelve.
Right, right. Now, another consideration of this is that the career advisor position does not, it's not required, it's just can be used to meet this requirement of number one. Second thing is the career advisor is not reimbursed. That comes from general funding. The career technical counselor can be reimbursed, and we currently put in our counselor for point three-eight position, and we're reimbursed like eighty-six hundred dollars out of career technical money, a separate funding model, for the career counselor, but the career advisor piece does not qualify for that. The career advisor also should be overseen by the career counselor. A counselor is a different, it takes a master's degree to achieve counseling. The career advisor doesn't even need any sort of certification.
I agree. So why don't we get, have our lawyer look at it and just get the clarification?
Absolutely.
And then this assistant principal career advisor position, I know where it's coming from, because we have, uh, Dr. Vogel and Dr. Peters took on the principal position, so the overload is starting to catch up. So what I think is, let's see, Mr. Ziegler would come next month, and I'm not so sure we couldn't get him to come up earlier. Let's get the information we need for the career counselor. Let's set up a meeting and let's act on assistant principal career advisor with Mr. Ziegler.
I'm fine with doing that, having a separate meeting or whatever.
I mean, because, I mean, the need is here, the need is.
And don't disagree.
Yeah, so let's get clarification from Mr. Paulson and, and the rest of us on here, on the counselor, and what we need from our lawyer, and then let's, then we can act on it, and we'll have a special board meeting and get it done.
My question on that is, well, I'd almost like to add to that meeting, in terms of what other needs do we have for staff position? Um, we, we just went through, if I could, Dwayne, we just went through our data that pointed glaringly at a need in mathematics in middle school.
I agree.
I don't have any data, and that's one thing I'd like brought to this meeting, maybe for Mr. Ziegler, is what data, what information do we have that this is a need? We, we said before about, you, your own words, you said that, why we have a finite amount of money, right? Well, if we're gonna add positions in our staff right now, I think we need to make a wise decision about where our money's best invested. I'm not convinced that administration is compared to our data that shows, and we say in our strategic plan that we make data-driven decisions, well, we might as well take that out of there. I don't have any data that says we need this position, yet I've got data here that says we need help in middle school math.
Do you have data from your administration telling you that they need help?
Just, just information, isn't it? Do we have any more?
That's where you need to trust your administration, Mr. Paulson.
Trust is a big factor in there, I agree.
Yeah, it is.
I, I think, and I, and in all fairness, I think Mr. Ziegler can't walk in here next month, even two months, he's gotta be here a year.
I'd at least like to see a layout of understanding.
And see what our needs are, and see from his perspective what our needs are, because, like I told you at the last meeting, Damian, our, our job is to watch budget, hire a superintendent, and hire Amber. And we turn it over to them, and they hire the staff that they see as needed, as we give input on what we feel is needed also, but they are the ones that do the hiring, so, I mean, you, you can take it wherever you want with it, but I would, Mr. Ziegler's gonna have a hard time answering that question next month, or even the following month, without being here.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, Dwayne, that what we should be doing as a board is that high-level, um, approving, and that takes getting good recommendations from our administration, which we don't get. Part of a good recommendation, if I could.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, part of a good recommendation is that data and support outside of, yes, trust me, I'd like to see what those positions are, the time spent, the, that, and I, I also question this, how come we get into the details when we're talking about HVAC, but yet when we're talking about administration and staffing, then you're telling me we shouldn't touch that? We should have a consistent approach to curriculum, administration, job roles, and.
Staffing is.
It certainly is. Our job is, as a board, it certainly is.
What?
Is that what it said in the new board membership meeting?
What's that?
About what your responsibilities are.
Responsibilities, but responsibilities are the minimum requirement responsibilities, right?
Right.
But certainly, there's nothing, it never said anything in the orientation that we can't ask questions around what the intent, and I think we have to, it isn't coming upon the board, I mean, why is data-driven decisions about where we put our staffing line?
But I also think it's important to have the person that's gonna help make that decision here, the help that's really gonna do a lot at this time to sit and go round and round about it, and, I mean, I don't know, I just think without Mr. Ziegler here, without having more information on multiple things, I mean, or arguing, we're not constructively doing anything, so.
I guess I'm asking as to arguing for that information, to understand what the administrative positions do and what the need for this position is. That's what I'd like to have come to that meeting, it's just to ask.
So you wanna have a special meeting?
Yeah, I would.
I think let's reach out to Mr. Ziegler and see what he's got availability-wise. I, I mean, obviously, we need to figure out the counselor into things, um, you know, have that clarified, and then let's.
You can have him do that too.
Okay. And then go further.
Do we, we need a career advisor for this coming year? I, I'm asking, do we need a career advisor for this coming year?
We do.
Because without a career advisor, our kids don't get, don't get scholarships, they don't get their college stuff lined up, right? Career advisor is not required by centric code, right? But do we want one?
That's a very good question.
I say we want one, or I want one.
I do too.
Yeah, I mean, I, so, I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, I know it's not required, but does this school want one, and do we wanna support our kids out there? You know, and if we have consensus that we want one, then okay, we don't have to argue about that anymore, on the career advisor piece, right? So then it comes down to, do we need one or two counselors for splitting up our, our grade levels?
So let's find it out, then we can decide.
So i- is it just that question? I need to know, because I, I'm probably the one that's called a lawyer.
Yeah.
You know, do we need one or two counselors? Is that, is there more questions than that?
Well, yeah, so the question to the lawyer is just clarification on the, on the centric code, right?
Clarification on centric code, if we need one or two counselors, right?
But is there more questions than that? Yes, my, I have more questions around the idea of what position should be doing what duty. You know, certainly, the career advisor tied to the.
For the lawyer?
No, not for the lawyer.
Okay.
But for the next meeting's discussion. And for instance, there, we tied the career advisor before to the elementary principal, and I think we discussed why that was not a, a great, what should this career advisor, if, if we, and I'd like to see some data of why we think that career advisor is, is needed, right, because again, I've got data here.
You don't want one, or you're thinking no, or?
I'd like to see some data of what the career advisor, we've got some duties here, which is nice to have that information, and I say data, I mean information, whatever, but I'd like to understand what we're expecting out of the career advisor, why we want one, and then what, what duty that best ties with, because we're, we're not suggesting a full-time career advisor, right? So how, what position within our school is that best tied to? What role does our current counselor play?
I think it would tie really nice to an assistant principal.
What's that?
I think it would tie really nice to an assistant principal.
Yeah, fair enough.
I mean, that's just my opinion.
I don't think you're wrong, I just think there's a lot to tick in on making a decision.
Yeah, uh, no, that's fair, absolutely. I mean, I, I get where you're coming from, John, when you say, um, all of a sudden, hey, we're under the gun, we're under the gun, yeah, well, let's step back and not be under the gun. Fifteen point one, zero six, nineteen, right? And I can forward this email, Damian.
What's that?
What's it? The one you sent me.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's, it's just a snippet of the.
Correct, yeah.
Of the centric code. Do you guys have a time that would work best for a special meeting? Or?
Let me just, I'll just figure out what works for. See what works.
I think try to set something up with Ross, see if he can addition back to us, and see if we can make it work.
And the virtual option is, is good, when you start talking special meetings and trying to get Mr. Ziegler, us together in the summer.
Yeah, gets busy. Okay, anything else on that? R A C T C, no meeting. R E S P, anything on that?
Are they not meeting anymore, R E S P, or is it?
It's the, the director switched. I probably need to just give that new director a call, and kind of see what they are doing. Are we, are we using their services much?
R E S P.
Yeah.
I've set up a career training.
Okay.
We do lots of different trainings through there, on and off, it depends on what staffing needs are needed.
Okay, and is that it? You reach out to them, or they just, you just take their newsletter and take?
They offer a lot of different things, and so, um, we'll see if there's something that people need, and if not, if there's something that seems to be a trend in our school, then we'll reach out to them, and we'll say what they can and can't offer.
Yeah.
All right, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, July tenth.
And that would be the annual meeting.
And that'll be two wings. You'll start at seven.
Yeah, you'll.
So do you wanna start at June seventh, or do you wanna start it earlier?
In the, I don't know.
He doesn't answer his question.
We had a shorter, we had a shorter meeting that started beginning for this one, so I think we should start it at six o'clock.
Well, he asked a question.
He asked a question.
So, all right, you wanna switch I want to six minutes?
Yes.
I'm good with that. Six o'clock, July tenth, two meetings, especially four, and again, we do not have to canvass the election or anything like that. Okay, congratulations, John. Mr. Olson, welcome. See you at the next one. You can stay for two. Ah, meeting adjourned.